I'll call this regular council meeting in the village of Graham and Anne to order at 7:35. That's 8:05 in Newfoundland. I'm just going to lead off with saying we're doing a test run tonight with Councilor Boyd in Newfoundland, so hopefully this works for anybody who's watching. And hopefully this works for those of us who are here in the room. So with that, for prayer, we have Pastor Dave Phillips.
This beautiful day that we've had and the beautiful life we can live on this island, and we just ask that you would continue to bless each one and help each one to seek ways that they can make this a better community. And I just ask, Lord, that you would continue to help this council and all the staff and people that are engaged in working to make things the way that they are, to help this village to run smoothly. And we just give this time to you this evening, and thank you for all the blessings you give to us in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you. I don't have a lot for opening remarks. I think, first of all, it's good to see, as you said, some good weather here and the tourists that have hit the island. It was particularly good to see everyone out and about for Island Fest this past weekend. I think we have a report on that later on in the agenda. But I do want to say a huge thank you to Counselor Turner, Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, Counselor Toll, and Counselor Greenlaw, who really spearheaded this for us along with Graham and Anne Island Tourism. There's an untold amount of work that goes into it, and I know there were a lot of people that volunteered, but I really appreciate you guys stepping up and taking on that organization. So, thank you for that. And the only other thing that's not on the agenda that I think bears mentioning in the opening remarks is the announcement from A and B in the province a week and a half ago now, that the backup air ambulance plane that's in Moncton, they are working to staff up with pilots, and so when it is not needed to, while the other plane is having maintenance, it will be positioned on Graham and Anne. So we will have a little bit of coverage again here on the island. It's not a permanent solution, and it's not the end solution, which they acknowledged in the press release. I think we can all agree it's frustrating how long this has taken, but at least we're seeing a little bit of progress. So that was a little bit of good news a couple weeks ago. So with that, we'll move on to item number four, which is disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none. Item number five is adoption of the minutes from our regular council meeting on June 5th and from the special meeting on July 4th.
I would move that we adopt those, the minutes of those two meetings as circulated.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a second or?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Additions to the agenda. I have one invoice to pay out of the general operating fund, oh, the general capital fund. It's for Richwill Truck Center, for the transport truck for the transfer station that we approved at the July meeting, and it's for $59,225. I also have in closed session, which would be 18-3 for legal, it's a potential DTI contract that we'd like to talk about. Is there any other additions? Would anybody like to move? Additions.
I make those additions.
Heard the motion from Counselor Layton. Do we have a second or?
I will second that.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. We're going to have to get used to that delay from the future. Item number seven is the RCMP report. We have Corporal Blaze.
Files from June 2022, we have, was 67 files. This year, June 2023, there were 60 files. 10 files were charges laid or recommended, five of which were criminal code offenses, including assault with weapon, break and enter, uttering threats, and operation while impaired. Just a breakdown of the two types of file. For June would be two assault with a weapon, two files for assault with weapon, four break-in and enters, two of which were unfounded, so proven not to be break and enters. Three were failed to comply with conditions. Two frauds, three mental health, two impaired drivings, 10 other traffic, one theft, two missing persons, one well-being check, four suspicious persons or vehicles, and two uttering threats. Files for July 2022, we, there were 85 files. Files for July 2023, there were 92 files. 18 files were charges laid or recommended, one including assault on police that included uttering threats, assault with weapon, impaired operation, mischief, and taking a motor vehicle without consent. There was one sexual assault file, one failed to comply with conditions, one impaired operation, one theft, and the rest were all motor vehicle acts. So breakdown of the files, we have six assault files, one break and enter file, two failed to comply with undertaking. There was 11 911 miss dials or open lines, which are very common when the weather is bad here. There were five mental health calls, four mischief calls, sorry, correction, five mischief calls, four thefts, two threats, uttering threats, three well-being checks, and then 20 driving complaints. And I also took part in the summer reading program at the library a few weeks ago, and I put together a presentation for the children on road safety, including bike safety and that kind of stuff. That is all.
Thank you. Any questions? How many kids were at the reading club?
I'd say about 20 or so plus. I don't know, I didn't really count them all. Ranges from like five to 12.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, item number eight, business arising from the minutes, and then nine is old business, 9.1 age-friendly communities for a committee. Clerk Esme Frost to speak.
So on May 8th, council passed a motion to proceed with becoming an age-friendly community, so we should be able to complete step one and start step two tonight. The first step is to pass a municipal resolution to commit to the age-friendly community approach and to actively support, promote, and carry out the age-friendly initiative on behalf of our community. So there's a sample motion that you'll find in your agenda package. So the resolution must clearly show that the community understands what an age-friendly community is and what's required to be recognized as such, and this was all explained by Brenda Lee when she came down and presented the AFC approach to council back in April-ish. So we could, do we want to make that resolution now or move on to the explanation of step two? Or?
Why don't we go through step two?
Okay. So step two is to establish an AFC committee. So the committee should include at least one member of council who should lead the AFC initiative and a diverse group of community members. So the advisory committee must select a chair to lead the meetings once it's chosen, who's all going to be in it, and they must make regular presentations to the village council to ensure that the elected officials are aware of the steps that they're taking. So we'll need a counselor to sit on that committee and help produce the rest of the committee. We do have interest from our recreation programmer to sit on the committee as well, so whoever is making it, that might make it a bit easier.
So would anyone like to make the resolution that we have in the package? We talked about doing this, I think, if I remember from when Brenda was here or when she did the presentation, that should be really no cost to us at this point.
No.
But it is a way to recognize that we're trying to do things for more senior people in our community and to be more aware of what we can do, so.
And I do have some funding opportunities and stuff that are available once the committee gets started, so we can go over all that with whoever's involved.
So, any questions or comments? Or anyone want to read the resolution? Counselor Turner.
Is it possible to maybe look at this after we're fully, like our numbers are filled out again, just because I think, I mean, I'm not trying to speak for everybody, but it seems like we're stretched a little thin at the moment. Not to put it off, because I do think we need to do it, but it's something that if we had nine people, it might be a little easier to absorb, but.
In the meantime, if the motion were passed, we could even put out a call for people in the community, if there was interest out there, to be ready for after the by-election, if that makes sense. Counselor Toll, you look like you had something to say.
Well, yeah, I really don't, I'm not even sure exactly what we're expected to do. This, like, are we supposed to plan things that have been, like, renos to help people have more access? Are we?
So there's eight domains that pertain to the AFC initiative. It's recommended to create a three-year action plan to look at two or three domains that the committee decides is most critical. So there's a, there's papers that I have that have all eight domains, and you're supposed to have such a diverse group that certain people should be able to work from it, from their part of the community, and work on one thing while the others are working on others. But she kind of said it's a slower approach. It's something that takes a lot of time. Also, what to expect for meetings, to be just quarterly meetings would be the minimum. So you can do as much or as little as they'd like, but quarterly is recommended, so.
So we're going to go to seniors and see what they would like to see? Is that what it's about? And then we try and work on getting those things in place for them, or?
It can be any type, like, it can be as far as housing, it can be like programming with Caleb, it can be what, like, and that's what would help from a senior being on the board, would, they'd be able to tell you what maybe is lacking, or it could be things like, like even that we deal with, like the accessibility buttons and stuff, like just little things that they might notice, or, yeah.
So we have a suggestion to delay forming the committee till after we have our by-election October 23rd. I think I have the correct date for that, but it's the end of October. In the meantime, do we want to proceed with this motion or defer the motion till we get to that point, or what's the wishes of the group? Counselor Green?
It might make sense to do the resolution, if we're going to go this way. Form the committee and not appoint the councilor till after the next municipal election, because we can advertise for community members that might be interested in being involved, and do that all with the thought that in November, the elections went November, October 23rd, I think, so by early November, we should, the committee could be ready to go. That's just a thought.
So does that mean you'd like to read the resolution that's in the package?
Sure. Excuse me. Age-friendly community approach. Whereas the municipality of Graham and Anne has realized the importance of providing our seniors with a good quality of life as they age, whereas the municipality of Graham and Anne recognizes that healthy aging is a lifelong experience that occurs in a supportive and age-friendly committee, community, excuse me. Whereas the municipality of Graham and Anne respects and recognizes the value of older citizens complying in society. Whereas the municipality of Graham and Anne seeks to engage citizens to make our community a better place for seniors to live, stay socially and physically active, feel safe, and be engaged in community life. And whereas the municipality of Graham and Anne would like to build on the momentum of the global movement of age-friendly communities initially, initiated originally by the World Health Organization as an approach to meet the ends of an aging population, the needs of an aging population. Whereas the age-friendly approach to community planning is compatible with and support our efforts and visions for a fully inclusive community, be it resolved that on the, what is it, the 14th day of August 2023, the municipality of Graham and Anne is committed to the age-friendly approach and will participate, support, promote, and work to implement age-friendly initiatives to improve our age-friendliness.
You heard the motion by Counselor Green. Do we have a second or?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw. Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. So that brings us up to the 10-minute open session. We'll assume that we're okay to move on up to new business, which is item 14-1, is from Immigration Refugee and Citizenship Canada, Immigration Matters Welcoming Week. And there is, excuse me, a package, a toolkit in your package. It was an email that we received a little bit ago. Basically that, and I don't, I have it open, but the date is in September, that there is a, September 8th to 17th, that it's welcoming, we designate it as welcoming week. I thought, given the number of people that we've had move into the community recently, it might be a way to acknowledge that we, that they are part of our community, and maybe we can do something with the multicultural association, something, I'm not even sure what, I haven't talked to them, but I just wondered if there was interest in it, given that we have, we've talked about doing something similar to this, but it seemed like a good opportunity to maybe do it something a bit more formally. So, questions, comments? Is this something we're interested in doing? Counselor Turner, sorry.
I have a call with Seren, who is the community guy with the Charlotte County Mill Key Cultural Association tomorrow. If you want, I can ask him what we might be able to do that might be beneficial or whatever, and just let you know what he says about that.
That would be much appreciated. So do we want to recognize, I'm not sure that we, do we need a motion to recognize it or just proceed along with it? It might not hurt to, probably don't need as formal a motion as what we just did for the age-friendly communities, but it might not hurt to have just a formal designation that that is, we're recognizing welcoming week.
I would make a motion that we move forward with the welcoming week planning.
Heard the motion from Counselor Greenlaw. Do we have a second or?
I will second that.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-2 is strategic planning, and that's me as well. I think I've talked to a lot of you around the table about this individually, but I thought it would be good to have a conversation here. It had been my intent to do sort of a midway point review of where we were. We had a very informal sit-down before we were sworn in back in May of '21, where we sort of outlined what we wanted to do as a council. And I thought at the halfway point, it would make sense to kind of go back, revisit what we've done, see if those things are still on our list, where we're going with that. And I also thought it would make sense to talk about not only what we want to do, but how we're doing it. Certainly, we've seen being two counselors short, it's put some of our committees in a bit of a pinch. And I wonder if it's worth talking about restructuring some of the committees. Maybe we want to do more committee, the whole meetings versus having smaller committees. Maybe the committees need to be a little bit larger. Maybe some people aren't happy with what committees they're on now. I mean, maybe Jordy's down there thinking, "I really don't want to do transportation anymore." But I just, I think it's, you know, the committee assignments were never meant to be like a five-year sentence, to that's where you have to be for the five years. So I think we've all, we've all got our feet under us, we've done this for a little while, so I think it's a good chance to have that chat. I had wanted to wait till the by-election, but having it at the end of October, it puts us right smack into budget season, and I just think it's, it's a lot to throw on to new people. It's like, here, let's try to figure out the budget and let's completely revamp how we think we want to do things. So I thought maybe we could lay the groundwork sometime in September and maybe pick an evening. I think we could maybe do it in an evening, I don't know if we need to, have a conversation about it. I'd like it to be, if we could get everybody there, given Counselor Boyd's work schedule now, and I know Counselor Toll has some travel planned in September, maybe we can look at some dates where everybody's on the island, put something on the calendar, and give it a little bit of thought about what we want to do for the next two and a half years. So, that's my thoughts. Any questions or comments? And if you think I'm crazy, feel free to tell me that, because I'm fully expecting it. Counselor Boyd, let's see how this works. Just a second, are we going to turn on your bike? Okay.
All right. You got me?
We got you.
Okay. No, I think this is a great idea. I know I've talked about it a couple times with Mayor Morris and with the CAO as well. I really think, I think this group has been doing an excellent job. We've really, you know, a lot of us had to hit the ground running, a lot of us are new. So it's been a, a, two and a half years of growing together, but I really think we're hitting our stride. And I think we've got a lot of things accomplished, and there's a lot of stuff on the backburners too, so I think it's a really good opportunity for us all to get together, whether it's an evening, whether it's a Saturday, whatever, and really just kind of hammer out and see where we want to be at the end of our term. So I, I agree wholeheartedly with Mayor Morris on this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, so maybe at this point, I will ask if you have travel in September that we know you're going to be gone. Let's get those dates out, and then we can see what the overlap is, and maybe we can pick a date and put it out there for everybody and try to set something aside. Does that make sense? Okay. All right. 14-3 is the Northhead Wharf Request for Information. Counselor Green.
Right button. This project at Northhead has been a concern and a conversation for quite some time as to what's going up, gone up there. There's been conflicting tales come out of it. The response that was put out last week was, didn't answer many questions. It left us more, I'll say basically where we were, I think, as far as information, but I'll just read this. Whereas the project in, this project is a major concern in the community, and whereas the status of the project is in question, and whereas the village is often referenced as a roadblock to its completion, I move that the village submit a series of request for information requests under the Freedom of Information Act to try to bring some clarity to this issue. These requests should include, but not be limited to, a copy of the final tender document, a copy of the contract, a copy of change orders, copies of all tests on spoil piles, copies of all tests on well water in the area, percentage of work completed, expected completion date, and copies of any reports that identify delays and possible solutions.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a second or?
I will second that.
Heard the second, the, seconded by Counselor Toll. Question? Can I make a suggestion? I wonder if, in addition to the request for information, if there should be a letter go to the minister as well, requesting those things.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. The, the reason I say a series of requests, not one, is if you ask for the moon, you're going to get the moon, if we can ask for specific topics, then we might only get 100 pages of information instead of 1,000, and it would be easier to identify it. And I have no, you know, for the minister to be made aware of that, that would, it would be all right, I would think, wouldn't it?
Counselor Turner.
My only concern is that the right to information is confidential. Making it more public means there's time to maybe tidy things up or whatever. I just kind of like the idea of going right to the documents and getting them, but that's just my slant. It's been a long time.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Counselor Layton?
What, what would we gain from this information, other than to tell somebody, well, this, like, it's not our project, we have nothing to do with it, so I don't know if the information's good, but what do we do with the information once we get it? You're going to get dumped, like, thousands of documents, I would expect, which is, if somebody wants to go through that, but I just don't understand the advantage, I guess, go through that process maybe, but I, my questions are going to get answered in the next six months when we get the information.
The, I think the benefit of all this is that any topic that comes out, you'll get the email threads, and you won't just get the regurgitated answer at the end. You'll get to hear both or three sides of the story, and then see where they ended up and see how they came, you know, it gives us the complete picture, not the Reader's Digest condensed version that we're getting.
Anyone else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 14-4 is draft financials. Treasurer Alyssa Calder to speak.
Hi. So it's August, and we finally have our financials. We should have had them in April anyway. We're just looking to get them approved. I sent everyone a copy over email on Thursday. I didn't print them off for one, because it's a lot of pages. Our accountant has agreed to come down again this year to go over these page by page if you wish. If you have any questions, I can ask her, but if not, we'd like to get them approved tonight so we can get them, the final drafts, or the final financial sent down. We're late, we need to get them into the bank, we're going to get a fine if we don't hurry. So, and the province needs a copy too.
Questions on the draft financial statements? Counselor Boyd?
Did they give us a reason for the delay, Alyssa?
I guess the lady from Beers that comes down here every year was just overwhelmed. They're going to send someone new next year starting out, but it's been a long wait, so that was really their only, that's really all they told me.
So, does that give us any grace period with the government over, over the fine?
I think so, and Beers said they'll come good for it if we do get one. I think we would have got it by now if we're gonna, if we're gonna get it. It's August, so we're a few months late.
It's not like the province hasn't been late with some of their information to us in the past either. So we're, any more questions, I guess, on the financial? And then we'd be looking for a motion to accept the draft financials as circulated. And while we're waiting for someone to make the motion, do we want Beers Neil to come down and go over them again? Or maybe, where it's so late, maybe we do it again next year and maybe move into like an every-other-year type of format? Does that make sense? I'm seeing some nodding, so that's good. So are we ready to accept the draft financials?
I make a motion that we accept the draft financials as presented.
You heard the motion from Counselor Turner. Do we have a second or?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Layton. All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Okay. 15-1 is the Solid Waste Committee Report. Counselor Toll.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to talk for a minute about the project we did with food cycle science. I wanted to thank everyone who supported our project and program, and we received our compost machines towards the middle of July, and the following Monday, we began the distribution. Esme, I came in to just talk to Esme for a minute that morning, and I left, I think it was five hours later, because we had had people streaming in steady, picking them up. So I was really pleased with that, and I think within the first couple of of days, we had gotten rid of the bulk of them. And everybody I have spoken to since then has had nothing but good things to say about them. We had one that was defective, and we had a couple of left here that hadn't been picked up yet, so I exchanged that for and put in the information, and we should be getting a replacement for that within a week or two. I also wanted to say that there is a site online that you can go to. I will ask Esme to just put it on our website, and it's the municipal recycle store that you can buy supplies if you want, or see what's available, or have questions, and you can get information. Also, I would like to hear about your experiences with this, maybe around the middle of September to the end of September, of how many times you're using it. We'll sit down to a little questionnaire, and you can fill them out for us and let us know how you feel about it, and they will take the information and do, finish their study to see how, well, it worked, and if they continue offering these to different, different places. I had the Charlotte County Waterways had contacted me and asked for the information, because they heard about our program, and they were interested in getting in on it as well, so it'll be interesting to see how many other communities get involved. I think it's a great way to start cleaning everything up and having less going into our landfills. Our Redemption Center also is gonna be due for a little bit of changing, and we've had some signage made up to show the new way to bring your bottles in, what bottles are acceptable, how much each one's worth. They'll be hung on the outside of the building, so you can see them and you'll know, and there'll be some paper there, or pamphlets there, to tell you if you want to take them home, to put on your fridge, so you know what's recyclable and what's not. And to finish, I just wanted to talk about the tires. We had a struggle for months, I know, to get these tires picked up. We have had three pickups by Al's Trucking that have been taken now back to the tire levy people. However, there are some left there that we can't get rid of, because they are full of wasp nest, and there's just, nobody wants to go near them and deal with them. So, we're working on what to do to get rid of them, and they will be gone. And just so that everybody is aware, we just don't have the space to take tires any longer, so we're going to ask you to please take the tires back to the, the places on the island that sell tires and deal with tires, and they should be able to take them from you, and they will make sure that they're taken away with their tires. If you have any questions, you can always ask me about it, give me a call, email me, whatever, and I can let you know who's available to do that. And there is some other things that will be happening in the near future, and we'll try to keep you updated on what's going on. And that's basically it for now. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I would just say thank you to the Curling Club for letting us store the tires there in their parking lot. We do appreciate their patience with us as we work through that.
Yes.
Fifteen-two, Transportation Committee.
I think I can talk now. We'll start out with the airport. As everybody knows, we're going through the project now. We just started paving today. It looks good. They got a couple strips down there, but everything's going as scheduled. The Medevac plane cannot land. There's a bit of a blackout period through the day when paving come, when paving's being put down, but as the temperature goes down, that plane will be able to land later through the day. And as soon as, as soon as the temperature's down, there's a bunch, chain of emails that people go through, that's gonna be notified that it's, it's, the surface is ready to land on, so that's good. And in, in the event that something, somebody needs to be taken off the island while paving's going on, Lifelight is gonna be the first responder for ambulance New Brunswick. They've been here, they've visited. I met with them last week, I guess, and they're up for the challenge, I guess. Hopefully, we don't have to use them. And in, in a case that they can't make it, I guess we rely on JRC, and of course, the ferry is our last, last option. But hopefully, none of that'll take place in, in the next week. We can get this paving behind us and get our airport back up to operation. Any questions with the airport at all?
When, if we have all sunny days, how many days will it take for the paving to pave?
Well, Chris and I just had that conversation, and he was on the last project update meeting last week, and I wasn't there, so, but I think it's six to seven.
Roughly eight days.
It's impressive, the pavement going down. It's impressive operation. Is there anything you'd like to add to that, Chris? You're, you've been in front of this the whole time.
I just think people need to know how much work went into that airport. It wasn't just a matter of resurfacing. That airport was completely rebuilt from the ground up, and at the same time, maintained some level of access for medevac flights. That was near impossible, but with hard work between our engineers, our contractors, Department of Health, EMANB, Voyager, and the village, knock on wood, everything that needed to get done, did get done. So, hats off to everyone involved with making everything work to date. Even with the paving, it's still a bit of a, of a shuffle. Every night, there's drone footage that's sent to EMANB and into Voyager, who's our new medevac service provider, showing the location of the runway. That runway's gonna change every night according to the paving schedule. So, tonight, we have a temporary runway on a gravel strip. Tomorrow night, the temporary runway will be switched over to the southern side, which is the first three lifts of pavement. Night three, it'll switch back over. So, every night, that runway's gonna switch back and forth. It's taking a lot of communication. We meet every Tuesday, and the key has been all along, that we cannot over-communicate with all those providers, to make sure that everyone knows exactly what's going on, when it's going on, and what's the condition of the runway at that current time. So, again, hats off to everyone for making it happen, and here's to getting that runway back open.
Excellent. Okay, we'll move on to the, I guess DTI. I don't have a lot to say about DTI. The political landscape's changed a bit since we sat down here last. We have a new minister, and we've reached out to Richard Ames. He'll be taking over Jeff, Mr. Carr's job, so he'll be coming, I hope, in September. I don't think we've got a finalized date yet, but he'll be coming and visiting with all these concerns that we have, and hopefully, we can pick up speed where we left off and keep, keep progress moving forward on the projects that we've initiated. So, lastly, I guess, is our ferry partnership committee meeting. We had that recently. I just want to talk about a few things. I guess the, the refit is expected to be six weeks long, leaving around or about October the second, tentatively, right now. That is the date. The, the adventure needs significant repairs, including engine, complete engine overhauls, two gearboxes in both bass thrusters. So, so there's no guarantee that the project will end in the six weeks allotted to that timeframe. So, we've kind of discussed in the, the possibility of where we, we've, we got our three extra trips from the Grammonan five, and we took, put one on the front of the schedule and two on the end of the schedule, but now we're thinking about throwing away one of those trips that we just got, and sending the adventure away a week early, just to, to ensure it'll be back here for, for lobster season. So, we've got a few challenges there. I don't know where we are with that yet. I think, I think it's pretty clear what we're gonna do, but, but I don't think the timeframe of the shipyard.
I think there's still some checks going on to see if they can get it in the week earlier.
Exactly, exactly. But, that's just a possibility. We talked about some, the standby challenges. Everybody's aware of the challenges that they have in the mornings when they go up there on standby, and hopefully, they've come up with a solution, I think. Until the province puts that forward, I couldn't say what that might be, but it's, it's a simple fix, so I think we'll see that happening. And the other thing, I guess, that I wanted to bring up is a fair increase. The province is dedicated to raising our fares, and we've put a strong opposition to that. Nobody around the table at the, the meeting represented by the village was entertaining the idea of a significant fare increase. So, we're gonna challenge the minister when he arrives, and we're, we'll have that conversation with him personally, but I'd hate to see the fares go up significantly. And Bonnie was there, so if I missed anything that I should add to that, you're.
Bonnie left for a great deal of the meeting, actually. The only thing I am wondering is, on the fare increase piece, if we should not have a letter ready for the minister, should he, when he comes in September? And if not, then we send it stating our opposition, and having, and asking for a dedicated conversation to it, because I think it, it's easy to, it's easy to raise the fares on the Grammonan ferry system, because there's a fare system in place.
Yes.
But it's unfair that we are always bearing the burden of other fares that are, have, also have increasing costs, but aren't being, seeing similar types of fees being placed on them. And then, when you look at the implications across the community as a whole, it's not just if you need to go away, it's the cost of bringing goods here, it's the cost, what it does to our cost of living comparatively to the rest of the province. So, I think we need to have a very full discussion with the minister about this while he's here, and maybe we need to talk to the Minister of Finance and the premier. But, I almost think it might be better to see what the provincial political landscape plays out like over the next six weeks, before we launch too deeply into a conversation about it.
Yep.
Is that somewhat politically correct?
Great, excellent. Sounds good. I guess that's it for me.
Questions or comments? Okay. That was easy. Arts and Culture Island Fest, Counselor Turner.
I'm glad it's behind us. But I just kind of wanted to say that there were a lot of things that were kind of up in the air, and the weather was not looking good, so it was like finding, you know, alternate venues and things like that, just in case. So, but everything went well, as far as I know from my point of view, and I've had a lot of good feedback. I hope some of you have too. We did have some hiccups, but it was, again, one of those things where if everybody works together, it just, you know, it comes around. So, I think most of the issues we ran into were sort of invisible and unseeable by the, by the general public, so that's probably just as well. The food trucks, as always, were a big hit. I think everybody got on their scales after that weekend, probably groaned a little bit, but, but it was nice. And the, the Vagde Sec was, I think, a big hit. There were a lot of people there, and that was one of the ones that we thought may have to go into the arena, and we're really glad it didn't have to, because it was an open-air show, and it, I had a little girl sitting beside me that was probably two or three, and she would just sit there, and she would go, "That is so insane!" And that was my entertainment, almost as much as the circus, but a lot of the little ones were really fascinated seeing them flying through the air and some of the silly things they did and all that. So, it was a nice addition to the, to the whole festival. I just want to say thank you to everybody who hosted an event, everybody who participated in an event, and everybody who attended an event, because every person, you know, just makes it that much more, more interesting and more vital. And I looked at the market when I was in the arena, and wow, there were a lot of people, a lot of vendors, and I don't know, it's just really nice to see so much activity around, and people enjoying themselves. So, thank you to everybody who made that possible. I say a special thanks to our CAO, because I don't think I've ever texted him in the two years I've been here, and I probably became one of those numbers that he dreaded seeing in those few days. But, but anything that I needed, he was very quick to act on for me, and some of it was just, you know, what? We need that, you know? So, so it was great to know that that support was there. So, just thank you, and I'm glad everyone enjoyed it.
Thank you. Questions or comments? The three-year-olds weren't the only people saying, "That's insane," under their breath, just for the record. Sixteen-one, Bylaw Number sixty dash twenty-three, a bylaw to replace Bylaw fifty-one dash nineteen, Counselor Green Law.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, the third reading of Bylaw Number sixty dash twenty-three, bylaw to replace Bylaw fifty-one dash nineteen, a bylaw respecting dangerous or unsightly premises of the village of Grammonan. Make a motion that we accept that third reading.
I did it. You heard the motion from Counselor Green Law. Do we have a second, or?
Sure.
Seconded by Counselor Green. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded?
Aye.
Motion carried. Item number seventeen is approval to pay the following invoices. From the General Operating Fund, sports interplus for ball field equipment, a one thousand five hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-six cents. Fundy fencing for fence toppers, four thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and forty cents. Fireworks FX for the fireworks, seven thousand five hundred dollars. Graybar Canada for lights, three thousand and one dollars and fifty cents. Island truck repair for the three ninety-six fire truck, one thousand seven hundred and twenty-two eighty-three. Waterfront fabricating for the transfer station trailer, two thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Jane Turner for Vagde Sec for three thousand two hundred and twenty dollars. Silk Stevens for the transfer station tender, nine thousand two hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-seven cents.
I'd make a motion that we pay the, those invoices from the General Operating Fund.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green Law. Do we have a second, or?
I will second that.
Seconded by Counselor Toll. Question?
Couple of questions. The fireworks, did, on Facebook, you know, there's no, nothing wrong, on Facebook, they were thanking some corporate sponsors. Was that in addition to this, or was that?
No, that's the total bill. We've only got a couple, uh, books donated to our fireworks, and that was it.
Was it? Okay, yeah. Okay, so that's in, and the Silk Stevens, we've dealt with that, and I think we had a little conversation about that a while ago. Is that?
That is for the tender at the transfer station. I went back to the Bells, and I emailed, and we do always, for Bells contract, not Bells contract, the transfer station.
Right. Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. From the General Capital Fund, Brunswick Engineering for the Airport Rehab, forty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-five cents. Northern Construction Progress Payment Number Four, six hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars and thirty-five cents. And the Ritual Truck Center for the transport truck, for the transfer station, for fifty-nine thousand two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
I would make a motion that we pay that from the General Capital Fund.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green Law. Do we have a second, or?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Item number eighteen is closed session. We have three items. Financial is the transfer station, financial for Swallow Tail Lighthouse, and legal for the potential DTI contract. Need a motion to go to closed session?
I'll make that motion to go to closed session.
You heard the motion from Counselor Toll. Do we have a second, or?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Counselor Green Law. All those, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Thank you, everybody.
Call this council meeting, and the village are barely in back to order. We were in closed session for three items. The first one was financial for the transfer station.
I would like to make a motion to purchase a new DX one forty excavator with thumb and dozer blade from Paul Equipment for the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the transfer station at the cost of, at the, coming out of the General Ca-
from Paul Equipment for the amount of two hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the transfer station at the cost of, at the, coming out of the General Capital Fund.
You heard the motion from Councilor Toll. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilor Greenlaw. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Item number two was financial, Swallow Tail Lighthouse, Council Boyd?
I would make a motion that the village allocate another fifteen thousand dollars to the Swallow Tail Restoration Project.
You heard the motion from Councilor Boyd. Do we have a seconder?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Green. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary, contrary minded? Motion carried. And the third thing was legal with the DTI contract?
I'd like to make a motion that we write a letter to the minister regarding our current municipal agreement between DTI and the village of Grammonan.
You heard the motion from Councilor Layton. Do we have a seconder?
I will second that.
Seconded by Councilor Turner. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary minded? Motion carried. Our next regular council meeting will be here on September eleventh at seven thirty P M.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. I will second that.
Thanks, everybody, and have a good evening.